And we are talking about the school board race that we find him in. So I'm gonna let Tom go ahead and introduce himself while I share on some other pages. So I'm gonna kind of ignore Tom, you guys pay attention to him.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I'm Tom Edwards. I'm a Sarasota County School Board member. I've been doing that for four years. I'm an entrepreneur that's built and sold two businesses, and I'm really proud of the accomplishments that I've been able to do while being a Sarasota County School Board member. I have a whole host of reasons that I'm running, but I just finished up the Tiger Bay event last Thursday. I'm really excited to be here having a conversation with Frankie. Frankie's my neighbor. We live in the same development.
You just found that out?
Yeah. And so I'm not afraid to answer tough questions. I don't have an agenda to come here and talk to you about specifically today, but I want to really talk about constituents' questions. I'm not afraid. That's why I'm here. So Frankie, fire away with your first question.
Okay. Let me share one more page. All right. All right. I had taken a few questions, and they're some of the same ones I've asked everybody. And I try to knock out the more controversial things right up front, okay? And it's one, and I told you before this, I got several things on you yesterday that people kept posting, and then I got a text too, where it just comes on, this one's about Liz Barker. And you're more than welcome to comment on any of the Liz Barker or Karen Rose interviews and anything they said in them. And I'm not gonna question it. You're free to say whatever you want to say on them. But this one goes into saying that, a comment, and I hear this all the time with you, where they say Trump voters, the regime supporters are Nazis. And I'm assuming the Republican Party sent this out, I'm assuming. Do you want to address that? Because it seems like they always put that out. And I don't know if it's true. I don't know if it was just you saying what a lot of, sometimes a lot of Democrats will say, oh, they're Nazis. Knowing that, you know, I'm Italian. My parents immigrated from Italy. I'm not a Nazi. But I know that something they just say has a negative connotation behind it, not really that Frank is a Nazi. And I don't know if that's what came across, or however, if you want to address it.
So that is a comment that I did put on social media. And it was back when I lived in New York before I moved to Sarasota, or in fact have been a Sarasota County School Board member. I have addressed this comment publicly, actually at the school board meetings. So I'm happy to address it one more time. Number one, it was in response to the former president saying after Charlottesville that there were good people on both sides. But after being very, very angry and disappointed in our former president being elected in the first place and posting social media posts out of anger, I self-corrected. And I decided, well before I moved to Florida, to stop posting angry rhetoric, because angry rhetoric doesn't really solve any of our problems. I decided when I got to Florida that I would try and be a positive influence in the community and do something positive for the community and for our division. And so, short order, I ran for school board. You're welcome. I won.
Now, you've been on the school board as a four-year term, right?
It's a four-year term.
Okay. What are some of the accomplishments you've achieved there during your four years? What do you hope to achieve and reelect for another four? I thought I read somewhere in the comments, when Karen was talking about a certain program, they said you had initiated, and I think it had to do with, my question revolving around, when I was in high school, I had to take small engine woodshop and stuff like that. So if you want, I know that's a lot to throw out.
No, no. It really embodies who I am and the kind of work that I've been doing as a school board member. From day one, when I arrived on the day, as I said, I want all our students to graduate with a plan. They should either be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. And if we work hard with our students from middle school on up to start thinking proactively, while you're in middle school, what do you think your high school career should look like? And when you get to high school, what do you think you'd like to do after college? One-third of every college graduating, or every high school class, is college-directed, and they do find their ways into college programs. And frankly, our society has spent the last several generations telling kids, if you grow up and go to college, you'll get a good job. So that infrastructure is already in place. What we haven't done a good job with are the two-thirds of kids that never find their way to college and really help them come up with a plan that gives them an opportunity to be productive, wealthy citizens. And so that's what I've been doing. So accomplishment number one, I'll speak quickly, is I partnered with the Gulf Coast Builders Exchange, and we developed the first trades academy, and it's at Riverview High School.
Okay.
And that was a combination of really working with, and frankly, if you really get right down to it, those folks are not necessarily politically connected, or we might not find ourselves aligned politically. But we never talked politics. We talked about what's in the best interest of our kids and the community. How hard is it for us to get electricians and plumbers and HVAC folks? And those folks were desperate to hire. So let's put our kids together. Let's show that opportunity. And frankly, several of our kids have already been hired. The second one that I've done is to sit down with David Behrner, the CEO of Sarasota Memorial Hospital. And when Venice Hospital moved out, there was a healthcare academy at Venice High School. But as they moved out, Sarasota Memorial Hospital moved in, because I had already started those conversations, to see how the one employer and the number-two employer, Sarasota Memorial Hospital and the Sarasota County School District, could collaborate and find jobs for our kids and careers for our kids. Guess what? There are five two-year certification programs that are on deck, but there's no classroom space available to teach those programs. And what's amazing about those two-year programs is that kids can actually get through 95% of that program while they're in high school. They need the diploma to finish up one class semester, and then they'd be hired into the Sarasota Memorial Hospital system where tuition reimbursement is available to them beyond that first two-year certification program. So guess what? We had that building lot at Sarasota, the Suncoast Technical College in Northport.
Yeah.
And it was on the five-year capital plan. And I couldn't convince my school board members to do it, so we worked through the superintendent to build it up if Sarasota Memorial Hospital put skin in the game. They gave us a million dollars.
Really?
So the point is, is that I partner with the community, regardless of political party, to find where the jobs are, where the opportunity is, how do we work together, and build opportunity for our students. We don't want them all to leave Sarasota. We'd love for them to stay and be productive citizens here.
I didn't know about that program. It's actually pretty interesting.
I know, and I'm proud of it.
Tammy Ream, sorry if I mispronounced her name, asks, how do we get the school board to focus on education? Focus on education and decisions-related education instead of LGBTQI aspect? And it keeps popping up on me. That doesn't really impact most students. And I hear this a lot about that, so what are your thoughts?
You know, the public comments are driven by what shows up on an agenda, a school board agenda or a school board workshop, or comments or behaviors that school board members bring forth. So it's not that someone is bringing those public commenters into the school board room. It's the agenda that's bringing them into the school board room. So I think, to be honest with you, there has been a firestorm of LGBTQ+ individuals coming in to the school board, and they're having conversations with the school board members, not because I'm a member of that community, but because Bridget Ziegler suddenly became a member of that community. And all of the hate and all of the bullying and all of the rhetoric that came from Mrs. Ziegler and the Don't Say Gay law, suddenly, when it was found out that she had tendencies, they felt that they could come through the door and advocate for themselves and explain how disappointed they were in her hypocrisy. So it's not that they're coming in for me. They're coming in because of her.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I am a Republican, but unfortunately, Bridget didn't make her own bed. She's got a line in on that issue. On the, it does bring up another question that I've asked Liz and Karen, is the politicization or how you get these activists up there. Let's say the agenda drives in these activists from both the right and left. How can we have less of that and more of the mother that's concerned about her kid in third grade having some issue, where she can get time, and you guys can listen and focus on her, instead of hearing 20 minutes of activists and then getting frustrated, getting annoyed? And the person that has a true issue that's going on, not to say theirs aren't true, but you hear it all the time, that you can help them and focus on them more? If that makes sense?
It does. And I want you to, I know you said you don't pay attention to school board meetings, so I want to just paint a little bigger of a picture than just what's been going on for the last two years. I arrived at the school district four years ago, and it was exactly at the time when the Moms for Liberty movement was coming through the door and started screaming about CRT and Black Lives Matter and all kinds of political activist comments. And from my seat, I was trying to tell the public, there's a political firestorm coming through the door. It was the same people, the same talking points that was in our county, the neighboring counties, across the state, across the country. And they were a political, organized activist movement. And then all of a sudden, all of that anger, all of that rhetoric that came through public comments, suddenly turned into legislation in Tallahassee that looked like Stop Woke, Don't Say Gay, all of those bills. And so the public, who's not necessarily behind those initiatives, are angry. And so what they learned was, if they get organized, if they come into school board meetings, if they start yelling at school board members, maybe it'll turn into legislation. That's what they've been trained to do. So all of a sudden, now that it's reversed, that people are disgusted with the fact that they terminated a high-quality superintendent, that they're disgusted with the fact that they tried to bring Hillsdale College through the millian into our school district, that they start having LGBTQ+ and transgender issues, which is a non-event in our schools, period, then it's the politics that has created this division. And once again, as I would share with you, is that the way to solve that problem, we had already solved because of Moms for Liberty. We did it this way, Frankie. I came up with, and the process of, I want to hear your public comments about what's on the agenda that day, so that you have a shot to come through the door, and you get three minutes to tell me about what I'm about to vote on, okay? After we do the business of the board, and after I've heard your public comments about the agenda items, then we're gonna open the board to any general comments, and I'll sit there until the cows come home and hear whatever you want to tell me. If you want to attack me, you don't like my blue shirt, I don't care. But you have the right. And so what ended up happening is, when the new board came in, they got rid of that policy. Guess what we're voting on this Tuesday? We're putting it back. We're putting it back. You're welcome.
And I have to agree with you. It's not a bad policy. And I follow politics, and I've seen a lot of these where they come in, they give their opinions, and they talk about a subject matter. And sometimes it can be like, you know, it's a good idea to put it at the end and just talk in the beginning about what's on the agenda.
I don't want to shut the public down. I just want to, I can't be exhausted after three hours of public comments to vote on an agenda. If you have something I'm gonna vote on, tell me about it, and I'll consume.
Let me ask you. You mentioned the superintendent, and it was Aspin, and he was let go. And I have asked all the two that I've interviewed, which one was your favorite superintendent? I remember Karen talked glowingly about, is it Connor?
Yes.
Okay, Connor. Liz, Liz was, she just, she really, she liked all of them. She didn't really mention Bolling. She liked the other two. What about you? I'm assuming you like Aspin over Connor? Were you really disappointed to see Aspin going? Or are things working out with Connor? Would you like to see some changes?
No, listen, I like them both the same.
Okay.
Why I was really upset about the termination of Aspin is that, again, I'm gonna take you out, make the frame a little bit larger. Prior to my getting there in 2020, we had just been with an interim superintendent, Mitzi Corcoran.
Oh, yeah.
And before that, we had Todd Bowden. And he was only there for two years. And then before that was Lori White.
Yes.
So since Lori White, look at every two years, every two years, every two years, every two years. Do you remember a conversation that my colleague said with you that our third-grade reading scores were static?
Yeah.
Every two years, every two years. It's called a superintendent reset. When a new superintendent comes on board, it's 50 schools, it's 40,000 kids, it's 5,000 teachers. You don't just wake up and know everybody and know what you're gonna do, so you have to get acclimated, you have to get a chance to know everybody, the strengths and weaknesses. Then you have to design programming, and then you have to enact it. It takes about two years.
So why do you think they're changing them out every two years? What's the problem?
Listen, I would say to you that, and again, I wasn't here for what happened, we're talking about, and I wasn't part of that.
I remember Tom.
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
And Mitzi did a super job as an interim, as a non-educator. A non-educator. She was our CFO. Then you have COVID. Dr. Aspin gets here in COVID, and I don't, I'm not making excuses for anyone. But unless you were in the school district like I was during COVID, people coming and going, remote learning, kids in quarantine and out, bus drivers in and out, food service in and out, teachers, it was pandemonium for two solid years. And yet, and yet, Dr. Aspin came in and came up with a strategic plan. He had the literacy coaches, he had the behavior specialists, and we didn't have a strategic plan. So in the midst of all that pandemonium, he got that installed. And then he hit the strategic plan, and because of the pandemonium, he took the ESTRA dollars and he invested in his new plan, thinking, I've got two years to solve the ESAR cliff. So I'm using non-reoccurring dollars, but by two years, I'm gonna fix it so that my plan is backed up by reoccurring dollars. And so what did they do? They fired him. And the Dakota Ring went out the door with him.
Why'd they fire him? I don't remember.
If you want to ask my-
Was it job performance or something?
No. My personal opinion was that it was politics, because it happened around the country. In conservative Moms for Liberty school boards, it happened around the state, and it happened around the country. And so that's when I started to pay attention to two school board members who I thought I could focus in on. One was a mom that had kids in schools, and I thought the other person was an educator. And it turns out that they were political activists. And the very first thing they did was fire a superintendent because of politics. Now, let me tell you the good news. The good news is Terry Connor and Dr. Aspin are cut from the same cloth. They're all about kids, every kid, every day. It has nothing to do with gender, transgender, race, every student, every day. And we're going to be the best school district in the state of Florida. And I'm thrilled that it's Terry Connor. It could have gone really bad.
Okay. You know, something else that just popped in my head is, they were with, I think Karen Rose, I think Liz brought this up too, the mental health issue. What are your thoughts on the mental health issue, helping the kids out, involving the family, not involving the family? Where do you stand on that? Because a lot of people are against, have concerns. I've seen a few times pop up on the questions during previous interviews.
That's a magnificent question, because you've got, it's wrapped into mental health, and it's wrapped into parents' rights. Two separate topics, but they do intersect. So let me start with mental health. One of the things that I ran on the first time was that there was a serious mental health crisis going on in the country as it relates towards students, and a lot of it is social media oriented.
Yeah.
So, but beyond that, layered with COVID at the time, and it just got exacerbated. So really, and frankly, I worked with Tom Knight closely when he was the head of First Step-
My buddy Tom, yeah.
-to really try to figure out, how can the school district and First Step collaborate and work on? And I think we were instrumental, frankly, in getting that additional tax from the county commissioners to make sure that we had money for mental health funding. So that's one issue. The second issue is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get there before I talk about parent rights in a second. But let's also say that 47% of our county is at or below the poverty rate. When poverty enters a household, trauma, whatever it is, will find its way to that student, food insecurity, shelter, domestic abuse, whatever issues are bringing into that household of poverty will show up to the student. Sometimes it's mental health-related, but it could be simply trauma-related. And there should be mechanisms that our school district can provide to make sure that every student is ready to learn every single day and to address not just the student trauma, but the family situation to make sure that they have what they need so the student arrives every day. And there are programming that I'd love to talk to you about, about how that can occur. Third, let's talk about parental rights. You think back when you were a student, and I think I'm a little older. But when I was a student, what was the Holy Trinity? The teacher, the parent, and the student. That was Holy Trinity, period. And I used to quake in my boots when it was Parents to Student, or Parent-Tutor Conference, because, and that was mandatory. That happened all the time. Because educators have known for a million years, if we have the family support, if the family is bought into the programming of what's going in here. So this whole fallacy of boys going into girls' restrooms, and LGBTQ, and CRT, and all these things, and that there was, it was never that. It was always bring mom and dad through the door, get them to be engaged wherever possible. The challenge is actually getting them through the door, because now it's so difficult. Mom and dad are working just to put food on the table and to work. And so we as a school district have to do a better job of being available when the parents are available, not when we're available. So that's a third thing. So the parent rights issue, I am with them 100%, because that's the, that's the home run. If I can get parents involved, if I can get parents to be part of the conversation and the dialogue and all those things on an ongoing basis. And by the way, ever since that conversation happened, I've been a school board member about parental rights. I look across, and I look at the administrators, and I say to them, don't we already ask the parents permission for that? Don't, mental health being one of it? Don't we already check with the parent?
Yeah, Liz told me something about permission slips to do everything or something.
Yeah, so guess what's happened? Because of all of this boogeyman about parental rights, it's put everybody on the defensive, and that's why we're filling out permission slips on everything. A nickname, a nickname.
So that's the idea, is to avoid any sued or trouble, is to validate that you're getting the parent involved?
Right. And so here's what I would prefer. I would rather that parents opt out instead of opt in, which is really why we've never banned a book. Do you know that? We have a policy right now that says, and it was there before the Stop Woke or book banning, the policy says that if you, as the parent, object to a lesson plan, a lesson plan or a book in the media center, you can opt out.
Really?
That's there.
You mean a lesson plan?
It's already been there. So now what's happened with this Stop Woke and media specialists and book banning is that it's created a level of self-censoring that if there's something in there that might be controversial, then we don't put it into the lesson plan. But it shouldn't be that way.
So how can you get through that? Because I noticed, I think Liz and Karen both brought that up, that it's self-initiated, where you're banning or stopping books from flowing or plans, or whatever you want to call it. How can you get to the point where the school's not afraid of action being taken to them, and they can keep certain books or certain lesson plans in place? Because there are cases where, again, the book probably shouldn't be in there. I've seen lots of news bits where people come in and they're reading something sexual that's in the library. You don't want that. But then I've seen others where the book really doesn't seem, isn't controversial, has no issues, and it's not, it's banned or not allowed in the library. And it just-
So how do we do that?
Yeah, how do we do it?
So there's a couple of things. It's not as simple, because it took a while for the self-censoring culture to be embedded, which it is now. You have to roll back to, if a school board fired a high-quality superintendent, why wouldn't they fire me?
Yeah.
So think about, now, just to go back about that one more step. I was sitting with a letter from COBA, which is a coalition of business associations in Sarasota. So it's the chambers, it's the trade associations, it's all. And that was a letter from the head of COBA that was saying, we represent 5,000 businesses and 50,000 employees, and we don't want you to fire Dr. Aspin.
For real?
Then we had a letter that, or a survey from the, from the union. And the union put out a survey. In less than 24 hours, they had a 47% response from that survey. Have you ever heard of a survey with a 47% response?
Me neither. I delete them all.
Okay? So usually they're anywhere between 3% and 6%. 47%. And of that 47%, 97% said, we love Dr. Aspin, keep him. The board fired him anyhow, in spite of that community's support. So the teachers, the administrators saw that. So again, what do you think they're thinking about? That's why they packed up libraries. That's why they are self-censoring, because if they did it to him, why wouldn't they do it to me? And so that's where the morale changed. And I know you had a conversation about-
And that's a question I'll ask you too. Marry the teachers and everything, yeah.
That's what happened, because they see, so when you say to me, how do you solve that problem? You solve it at the ballot box. And you get people in there that are not playing politics, that are not bringing through the door Hillsdale College as an opportunity in public education. You don't redistrict into a less-than-good plan. We already had the best plan, and they redistricted to make it less equal. I mean, you name it. The political agendas have been one after the other after the other. And that's why those people, white public commenters, are coming through the door.
Um, I thought I saw one more question. All right. The, let's touch on the whole teachers and the motivation and how they don't feel appreciated. You have, I think you said 130 openings. I think Karen, I don't want to mix up Liz and Karen on it, but one of them said that there just wasn't enough money paid in the beginning up front. The other person said that there's, they have issues and concerns with the school board and some of the administrative staff that are impacting their job and their performance. Those are the two explanations I've got.
Listen, we have, we have a challenge in how we're running the school district. And one of the things that I loved about Mr. Connor when he came on board was that he was willing to think out of the box. He brought some fresh energy into our school district. By the way, from the time that I've been a seated school board member, I am continuously impressed by the level of our teachers, by their passion, by their commitment. Think about what I just said to you, about how every two years we had a new superintendent, and there was a new superintendent reset.
Yes.
They lived through that. So it was like, stop doing this, and start doing this, and stop doing it, and they still, they delivered quality instruction. That's why I put my op-ed out, when it was said that it was because we fired the old superintendent and the new, and I responded to that and said, absolutely not. It was because of our quality teachers and our quality administrators. And by the way-
Are you talking about the increase in the reading and English levels and that thing?
Yes. So by the way, one of the people that doesn't get enough credit for those reading scores is Chris Renoff. And he was our chief academic officer. And so when Dr. Aspin left, and he had made those investments in literacy and reading programs and all of those kinds of things, he held the fort down during the next interim period before Mr. Connor got here. And then Mr. Connor, and I have to say, with his team, his staff, his personality, he injected a sense of urgency into the plan. So all of those things, Chris Renoff, the teachers, Terry Connor's sense of urgency, and the continuity that was kept throughout the superintendent recess is why we have that bump up in third-grade reading scores. And by the way, I learned about that from a public commenter about third-grade reading scores as a new school board member by an adversary. John Wilson never says anything nice about me.
I heard that name the other day, John Wilson.
He calls me a clown. He's always making pejorative comments about me at the school board, always. But I'm grateful to him for one thing. He brought to my attention the third-grade reading scores. And that, my friend, is what public comments are about. It's about the public coming in and giving you insight into something that you might not have wanted.
Why did the public have to bring it to your attention instead of the superintendent? Shouldn't they be updating you guys with? Because you guys directly, you guys basically communicate through the superintendent. He spreads your wisdom and takes action on whatever you guys do. So why wouldn't he be bringing that stuff, that information to you versus a father, mother, or just a resident- a guy, a father, mother, or just a resident of the city?
Listen, I was a new school board member. It was probably within the first three or four months of my being seated on the school board. I'm not an educator. And so I'm, it was like drinking from a fire hose, learning from about, and what I honestly think about boards, by the way, and then specifically about a school board, I think it's a great idea that boards are diverse, that they come from various backgrounds. I'm not an educator. That's why I looked at that colleague of mine and thought, wow, this is a third, this is 30 years of education. I'll be able to rely on that expertise because it's not what I'm bringing. I'm bringing a business expertise. I understand about morale. I understand about data points. I understand about succession plans. All of those. And bringing the right people to the table and building a building, about getting collected funds. All of those things are not necessarily within the wheelhouse of the other school board members. But if we all work together and we all collaborate and we all leverage each other's expertise for the common goal, but that isn't what ended up happening. And so once I understood the third grade reading scores and the specifically the lower quartile, which by the way, is all Title I. And by the way, that's why I'm so focused in on poverty and trauma and entering into a household. It's not just about programming. It's not just about all of those things. It's about providing the right kind of support to that household and to that student so they're ready to work.
Okay. Holly Slater is asking a question and I guess it conflicts with what I heard from, I think it was Karen. And she says, what can be done to address the salary discrepancy between veteran and new teachers? Cause I, the way Karen explained to me, new teachers aren't getting paid that much at all. New teachers should not be making higher salary than the veteran teachers. There's no incentive for longevity. And when you're talking about that, something I hit them both with is, you heard about the guy here at Vansai with the romantic of care, the teacher, the teacher in Sarasota just got busted with a cocaine dealer. How can we screen better too? Cause that was a question, you know, we really didn't, I know it's one or two rotten apples in the barrel and everybody's going to have that, but is there possibly more? And we always see where teachers, where there's issues up there. So you could kind of blend it all together when you're addressing Holly's question.
Okay. So let's first start by saying, we have school board members that have those kinds of issues. So let's start there.
Uh huh.
Let's start by saying that the idea is across party lines, across industries, across government. It happens in our country. Bad apples get through.
Yes.
All right. It happens. It's how we respond to a bad apple and it's how we solve it to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's, I don't have an answer for you that a bad apple hasn't, that hasn't gotten through. How do we solve that problem and how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? So that's how I'll start there. In compression, what Holly was talking about, about entry level.
It's called compression?
Yes, called compression. So what happens is there's a higher percentage that goes to entry level teachers because we have to get them from 45,000 to 62,000 to make them competitive. So it's a larger percentage, right?
Okay, yeah.
Then we have to figure out, how do we now work with our sort of mid-range tenure and our, you know, our super experience, our veteran teachers? When you offer a percentage across the board, let's say it's 7%, 7% on $100,000 is still higher than 7% at $63,000. It's still a larger amount of money. And that's a conversation we've been trying to have with the union for a long time about how do we make it more equal? How do we get it so that everybody's getting their fair share of whatever we have available? And quite honestly, the bigger picture, which no one has really been addressing in this conversation, and I addressed it at Tiger Bay, neither of the two, we just passed a budget which put us at 7.9% of our general fund, right? We cannot go below seven and a half percent by policy. And if you ever find yourself in around 3%, the state steps in and starts running your school district with you.
Right.
So that's the bigger picture. Since I've been a school board member, we've been at 14, 16, 18% and we've been doing very well. We are suddenly finding ourselves having to deal with HB1 voucher programs, things going in and out, building new buildings. We started with, I think the, the reason why the high school at Welland Park got postponed was because we started, I think at around 110 million. That, it came back to us at 180 million.
With increased construction costs?
Just because everything went up. And we had to go back and say, we can't afford to build that building. Let's figure out how to build a building that we can afford. And so those are all the challenges that are coming at the school district at once. And one final thing that I'll say about entry level teachers, one of the things that I have been advocating for and talking about and talking about and talking about, and again, it got lost in the superintendent reset, is affordable housing. I'm not interested in offering affordable housing for that teacher that's in the middle or even that veteran teacher per se. I'm interested in coming up with affordable housing that is attractive to entry level teachers, that gives them that entry level salary and gives them an affordable rent here in Sarasota. And there's a plan, by the way, which I'm not going to share with you here, but I do have that plan.
What is it?
That tells you how to do exactly that. And then we will move that teacher out of that affordable plan and into a mid-range because we'll wrap them with an employee assistance program that helps them get down payment, that helps them get lower mortgage rate, that helps them find the right next step. And then we can keep those affordable units available for entry level teachers. I know this plan can work. I just need a school board that's willing to work with me, not against me because I'm not from their political party. And when you start a conversation like I know my colleague did and refers to herself as a conservative school board member, I've never referred myself in any way, shape or form in our conversation today. And I don't because I'm a good school board member. That's how I would define, I would define myself.
The, let's touch on, she asked about longevity pay real quick, about reinstating it. Who's that? Christie Cave-Cowett?
Yes.
Reinstiting it, anything on that?
Um, I would love to find a solution to get retired teachers back.
Can't they form an LLC and then come back before the one year after they retire?
Listen.
I think someone told me that.
Listen, it's not on the, on the priority of things that I'm trying to accomplish. I, I would have to do a deep dive in to find out what are the most practical solutions to solve that problem, which I haven't done yet. I don't get a whole lot.
Is it on the radar for somebody like Christie?
I could make it on the radar for somebody like Christie, that's for sure.
Um, Elizabeth asks, how can parents be effective partners with SES to support our children, their learning and the teacher staff admin at their schools?
That's a good question. It is a good question. And I, I think, I think there's, when, when I talk about how we can solve problems for families that are at or below the target line, one of the things that we do really well is that Atwater Elementary. And there is a slot there called a family engagement specialist, which is a social worker who has built relationships throughout our philanthropic, rich and nonprofit rich community. And so when a problem happens, that family engagement specialist knows where to go, who to talk to, and to help solve the problem for that family.
Okay.
In and around the family engagement specialist is an opportunity to, to build relationships for families to be more active in their school. It, it requires an intention of somebody that is involved with the family for all reasons. Academic achievement, problem solving, volunteering, engagement. And think about what happens for a teacher. A teacher can't be there at every single family all the time. They've got lesson plans, they've got a million things that they're working on. And what they ask for all the time is even more than a raise, is time. So a family engagement specialist at every school and I'm working on that plan.
So is Atwater, Atwater, is that a test case where you're hoping to spread throughout the community?
Yes.
Now, when I went to school back in 83, 82 and 85 was the time we had guidance councils. You guys still have those? It seemed like they did some with us.
Yes, we do. And what a, a guidance counselor is responsible for so many things. And one, I think when you and I went to school, we thought that the guidance counselor was there. You know, if we had questions, if we had problems that you could solve. Also, they helped us decide if we were going to college, how to get...
Mine told me I was going to end up in an institution, but...
I don't think mine would have said I was going to be a school board member, but here I am. So here's what we've done around that, that college career success center. There was a stigma attached while I was in school about if you weren't going to college and you were going to vocational training, it was less than. We've really worked hard to change that stigma.
Good.
And we have college career centers that really are there, working with the students to provoke them with ideas and suggestions about what's available to them. So that's not necessarily on the plate of a guidance counselor anymore. So that the guidance counselor can be more problem solving. So the guidance counselor can be more involved in actually counseling as we know it today. The problem that we still have is that the ratio of students to counselor is still very high just because of funding.
Okay. Christie Cave-Cowett, she has another question. Do you believe schools that accept vouchers should be held to the same standards as public schools since vouchers come from the tax of dollars?
Yeah, you know, vouchers have, um, let me start by saying I'm a fan of school choice. I think that parents should have the opportunity to design and figure out which is the best fit for their students. And choice is, is a, is a great way to do that. I am not a fan of all of the statutes and the mandatory requirements that have come at the school board. They've taken away the, the local rules about approving charter schools for our district. Here's an example of...
So it's done at the state?
It can, it goes to the state.
Okay.
And secondly, if we, or if we turn down an application for a charter school, that charter school can appeal it. It goes to the state. Lawyers are involved on both sides. The state is automatically going to approve the charter school and the prevailing team gets their legal fees paid by the losing team. So why would a school district have the incentive to say that charter school doesn't work for?
Yeah.
Right. So that's an example of how the legislature has stacked against us for the voucher program. But here's what the problem is with that. In our school district, we have high quality charter schools that were approved by our district. Dreamers Academy, Sarasota Military Academy.
My daughter's with SLA.
There's so, there's so many good, but they're part of our team. They're part of what works well in Sarasota and they came in and made the point. The ones that we just passed Charter Schools USA are Charter Schools for Profit, first of all, which is a blatant misuse of tax dollars.
Oh, sorry. I got a buddy that I don't, he's making a killing.
And so that's a blatant misuse of your, yours and my tax dollars. And so, and then Charter Schools for Profit also have their own, um, let's say landscaping company, custodial companies, food service companies, and they're owned by the same people and they contract from themselves. And they, and they make money on all of those. The one that we've just passed had a $300,000 a year expenditure for custodial services. That's going to be the cleanest school on the planet. So that's what I'm trying to say is that a one size fits all from the legislature on these kinds of statutes is not good. But, and our school board should be able to go back to Tallahassee and argue why that school is not a good fit for us. There were so many things wrong with that application that I feel we could have won. And to go back to those voucher programs, the other thing is that, for example, private schools don't have testing. I think you heard that from one of my...
Yeah.
So yet they can get our tax dollars. So there's, there's so many things that could be tweaked. And so our, our local school boards should be brave enough and strong enough to go back to the Department of Education and speak truth to power without fear of fear.
Okay. What do you see your primary role as function? Some of this I got off your site. You had, actually, I, I will commend you on this. When I went to your site, it drives me crazy when politicians don't put where they stand on issues. And I went to your site and you actually put some solid questions down that I put on you. I'm like, these are good questions. And you responded to them on there. So I do appreciate that from you because you don't see that on a lot of sites. Now, why don't you address the primary role of function of the school board? Cause we've talked about the school board. What do you think your main go, your main function should be as a member of that board?
Um, I think, and I, listen, let me answer that question. We, we're responsible for policy. We have to, you know, come up with policy and, and bring forward the right kinds of policy that would enhance student achievement, that elevate our teachers, that provide the right environment for optimum instruction for student outcomes. I mean, all of those things are related. We're also at the fiduciary responsibility of making sure that the financial health of our school district is in place and that we're transparent to the community on how we're spending public tax dollars, the money that we get from the state and our referendum dollars. And we should be mindful, and that's connected, by the way, to school choice. Because if every Tom, Dick and Harry wants to come to Sarasota County and open charter schools, then we have oversaturation. We have kids that are not getting. And so all of those kinds of things have yet to be addressed by the legislature. And it should be up to us as school board members to be able to speak truth to power and to collaborate with Tallahassee regardless of party, regardless of agenda, to what's in the best interest for the students in our school district. So that's part of it. For me, I also, when I got blasted in my first two years from Moms for Liberty coming through the door, I thought to myself, well, I have to do this for four more years. I'm not going to be able to survive. So I designed my own job description and I like to think of myself as an ambassador for our school district. I show up at sporting events. I show up at theatrical events. I'm available in grocery stores and restaurants. I've spoken to all the time. I, I show up at nonprofits. I, I go to lectures. I do whatever I can to be visible to the community and to be available to ask, answer questions and to collaborate, to find good ideas and good suggestions of what the community needs, what they want to talk about at the school board. And that's another key component. The third is it's peer-to-peer leadership conversations with the superintendent. We as a board hire the superintendent to be a strong educator and strong leader. But they don't come out of the box, nor did I, about how to be a good leader and how, and so it's collaboration, it's talking through, it's giving ongoing feedback, both positive and negative, that helps elevate that superintendent to the best leadership that he or she could possibly have in our school district. So it's a whole package and it's what makes me passionate about being a school board member. Because if I had that kind of peer-to-peer conversation as a board, I, I, we could be, we could have already been the number one school.
Number one school. Somebody asked about, I guess the Jim McCaslin, I didn't notice about tomorrow's meeting, but Tom, to give, in all fairness, did address the, how that's happening with the activists. I don't think we need to rehash it. If you want to go back to the beginning of the video. Holly did ask, what's being done to address the substitute teacher crisis particularly in South County?
That's a, that's a really good question because, and believe me, one of the things I do all the time when especially I meet retired teachers is I'll say, what about being a sub? What about being a sub? And the first question that I get is, the first answer I get is, not until everything else is fixed over there. I, I wish I had a better answer for you in terms of recruitment, in terms of substitute. I do think one of the number one issues that we have is dollars and cents. And when it's less than, I mean, what we're paying is not high quality, doesn't attract, and there's a lot of expense that a substitute has to go through, fingerprinting, background checks. We, we have to do a better job. And HR is going to be going through a re-engineering. That's a piece that Dr. or Mr. Connor and I have been talking about. So again, I wish I had a better answer for you today, but it is high on the list of making sure that we attend to.
So it's on the radar. Tammy asked another question. Your opponents keep saying that you want boys in the girls restroom. How can the public know that this is not what you stand for? How can the public know that this is not what you stand for?
Yeah, first of all.
Because I, I've heard that too.
I, I hear, I see it all the time. I know that, um, I think it's Karen's campaign or campaign treasurer, hack funds are sending out that kind of messaging. I mean, they all track back to the same address. Um, I, you know, first of all, it's not true. That, let me just start by that. Number, number one. Number two, when you're talking about the weaponization of transgender children, they didn't read about it in a book, they didn't read, they didn't hear about it from a teacher. It's an orientation that gets assigned as a member of the LGBTQ+ community. I didn't read about it in a book, and nor did I want to necessarily take on head, head first, uh, a very tough, um, life. It's solved, I mean, it's all been resolved, I have a wonderful life, but it was difficult to transition into a member of that community, and it was with a lot of societal judgment that isn't necessarily valid. And so let me start by that. The second thing I want to say is, when you take the phrase, "every student, every day", and you weaponize a transgender child by saying that a school board member wants boys in girls' restrooms, how can you live with yourself that you would weaponize a child? They're not deciding to be transgender because they want to be in a different restroom. They're not deciding to be transgender because they want to play sports. They're deciding to transition because they want to find their authentic self. How dare you weaponize that child and their family for what they think is the right solution for them?
That's good. That's, that's where he stands. Um, what are your, there's a, three more. You know what? I almost forgot about this. This is big. Title IX, and I heard this a lot from both Liz and Karen, I, and I may be wrong, Karen pushed it forward, Liz's concern was that Karen was pushing it forward when she didn't need to, and they could have waited for legal actions that were in play. Where do you stand on that, how the school board acted, and what do you wish would have happened, and any other stuff on Title IX?
Okay, so a couple of things on that. Number one, anything that Bridget Ziegler brings forward.
Is that a Bridget? I didn't know.
It came from Bridget Ziegler.
All right.
Is 100% politically motivated. 100%, we've seen it, we already have that track record. So that's number one. Number two, 98.8% of the time, Mrs. Rose has voted with Karen Rose. Lockstep. The only two things that they didn't vote lockstep was.
You mean Ziegler's voted with Karen Rose?
Ziegler, Ziegler and Karen Rose. Lockstep. Superintendent, Mr. Connor, and redistrict. Those are the only two things. Since I'm a school board member, everything else, including if who was board chair or who was vice chair. It was before this board, it was 3-2. When we vote, vote a board chair or a vice chair now, it's always 5-1. You know why? Why do I need to be a dissenting voter? What is the point of that? But they had to claim their party. They had to vote 3-2 against me or against whoever was the chair of the town. And that's the politics that we have to get away from. So when you talk about Title IX, Bridget Ziegler brings it up, Karen Rose almost catapulted out of the seat to second it, and it wasn't even planned to be voted on that night, and they voted on it that night. And it's the weaponization of children. Even Karen Rose said that that had to be to keep boys out of girls' restrooms. It's not addressed in the new Biden Department of Edg, that's not even discussed. It does bring forth the protection of sexual orientation, and it does bring forth the, the protection of transgender students. And from where I sit, every student, every day, any protection that you want to bring for me, for the enhancement of our students, I'm for. That's number one. Number two, if you take those out, that's not even my lane. If it comes from the federal government and the, and Biden overreach, the courts will decide that. But every other enhancement in that Title IX resolution makes it better for our young ladies, makes it better for the protection of our students and our teachers, and those are the ones that I'm looking forward to as well. The other side always will weaponize and create a boogeyman, and those are what they found. But really examine that new thing that came from Biden, there's a lot of great stuff there.
Okay. What will you do as a school, have the school board thought through, or you as an individual, if Mr. Trump wins, which the way things are going might be a high probability, and he does away with the Department of Education, and they move it to the state level? Would that be a good thing, a bad thing? What are your thoughts on it?
I haven't really spent a lot of time trying to figure out what could be available. I, I never thought that, um, we would fire a superintendent and I'd have to figure out how to survive. I never thought I'd be sitting there defending why we shouldn't want Hillstone College into, I wouldn't have thought that I would be defending every student every day, including transgender kids. Every student every day means every student every day. So I have to tell you that, um, I think that the presidential election is, um, is an example of what I really stand for in public education. Aside from an academic environment, which is, I think you saw on my website, I stand for a safe, high-achieving academic environment for all students. That's one of the reasons. And that is a shared common value. And I don't know if it's shared by extremists, I won't say that, but if, I really honestly believe our county, not our country, live between both forty-yard lines. Some of us are a little to the right of the fifteen, some of us are a little to the left, but most of us are right down the middle, and we bounce back and forth over that fifty-yard line issue by issue. But here's what I really think is important. We want to keep the extremists out of driving us and finding a solution to every student every day, because that's what we all want, a safe, high-achieving academic environment for all students.
Okay. Um, what are your top three issues facing public schools, and how should they be addressed? This one I came off your website. What are the, your top three priorities? Let's say you win, um, going forward, what would you like to initiate, get going, and obvious quarter of?
Well, let's say, um, the protection of public education. I've been through that, about the voucher program. I've also explained to you that, for me, the protection of public education specifically here in Sarasota makes us, how do I make us the best and most competitive public source here in Sarasota? Trades Academy, the hospital building that we're building. I have a AI After Effects, uh, film production academy, starting a Booker this fall. It's, it has a whole lot of legs of where it can grow and how it can grow. And I'm always partnering with the community to find out what other academies and ideas and suggestions can we bring in to keep our public education competitive. The second thing, I talked to you about how poverty enters a household, and in conjunction with programming, how do we really make it better for every student to be ready to learn? I've already talked to you about that, but this coming Tuesday, we're going to be passing a whole division that Mr. Connor shared with me this past week. And it's a multilingual division.
I love that.
That, listen, I've been asking for it for four years.
My sisters in Italy speak like six languages each.
Listen, I got to tell you, twenty, I think it's about 22% of our community is Hispanic. We have a huge Ukrainian population. Think about where that intersection happens with these English-language learners and poverty. Imagine what that does to third-grade reading scores then. So I've been asking for it and asking for it, and it's, it will be passing it this, uh, Tuesday, the, the start of that division.
I like that.
I, I'm really excited about it. So you can see, those were all on my website, they're all on my materials, and that safe, high-achieving academic environment for all students is a shared common value that transcends who becomes president, because that's really why I wrote it. If your neighbor is not from your side of the aisle, or your family members want a different president than you do, I would like you to be able to say, I met Tom Edwards the other day, and he said he wants a safe, high-achieving academic environment for all students. Do you have a problem with that?
No, I wouldn't say anyone that would.
So that's the point of why I stand for it, because I want to stop talking about the silos and the divisions. I want to start talking about our shared common values and how public education can be better.
Good. Um, and you guys, I, hopefully you're seeing the purpose of these interviews. I've always tried to do interviews where you hear both sides, that I'm not being Tom out, because I'm a conservative, and I probably don't agree, and he probably doesn't agree with a lot of my stuff, but I think it's important to let him speak and have a conversation without me being up Tom, or Tom smacking me upside the head. Um, and that whole transgender thing, I actually, I remember this guy, I won't name his name, I went to high school with him back in, I've been, it's eighty-two to eighty-five. The poor guy could never speak out about his, um, position, um, his sexual beliefs and stuff. And I can only imagine the hell mentally that kid went through, because back then, as you know, it was ostracized, he didn't want to bring it up. And so, and I know kids are in school a lot, so I'm kind of torn on that whole issue.
Listen, it's not that I, I was opposed and agreed with, the original law said that we shouldn't be teaching sexual orientation or gender dysphoria in K through three. I'm not even sure it should be in the fifth or eighth grade. I don't know where it is. Experts would be better qualified to say when it's age-appropriate, not me. But the whole idea of a more perfect union is that we accept that people have differences, that have different orientations. I'm telling you, I didn't read about it in a book, and I thought.
Unfortunately, our society, people don't do it that way.
And I thought, oh my God, look at the miserable life I'm getting on. And I ended up not being that guy. I ended up really understanding how to lead by example. I'm, I'm with my husband for 33 years. Our mother's our best friend. His nephew is named after him, and my nephew is named after me. That's family. That's what we all want. And acceptance and inclusion and respect and dignity, nothing wrong with that as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I, I have a few friends, my daughter's best friend is, um, gay, and he's, comes over for dinner all the time, he's an awesome guy. I'll deny that in front of you, Matthew, if you're watching this. But, uh, this is, this was a good interview, I learned a lot. What I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a chance to pose. I did put your website and Facebook information on here, and if you want them to contact you another way, you can let them know. Um, this will be available on my website for sharing and my other platforms once I get back to my office. And the election is August 20th, where you will decide between Tom and his two Republican challengers. I'm supposed to be setting up an interview, but I've been just bogged down. So go ahead, closing, uh, what do you want to say in closing, Tom?
So I think the thing that, um, we really have to bottom down to here is, I, you know, based upon my work, my showing up, my commencement, my vote, my ability to sit here with someone who maybe not is somebody that we see eye to eye, and to volunteer and to be in front of you, and to answer your questions, and to speak transparently about my beliefs and my values, which means to me, you can trust me to make sure that your kids will be well-serviced and will have the best educational outcomes that money can buy in Sarasota County, and that they will be presented all of the best opportunities, whether they're going to college or whether they're not. And a safe, high-achieving academic environment is my, my olive branch to both parties out there, that that's what we all want, and that a good board who has the shared common value of the safe, high-achieving academic environment is what you should want to vote for.
Yeah, and you guys, love or hate him, he did come here and he answered some hard questions. We asked you about the transgender boy in the bathroom, all that stuff that you get labeled on, the Nazi thing, if you wanted to go to the beginning, and you handled them all, so I congratulate you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, guys, this is out there, share it if you want. I'll talk to everybody later.